Okay. Well, good morning, everybody. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Board Session. It is Wednesday, December 11th. It is in 2024 still. 9:00 AM, we're here in the Commissioners Board Room. Commissioners, the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. I'm so used to saying the Commissioners Board Room upstairs. As always, we start with a Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Public comment. David, welcome.
Thank you having me here today.
You pull that microphone up and make sure it's... There we go.
This is David Bean.
Very good.
Advocate for a special needs population in Salem. I'd like to tell the plant employees in Marion County, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays for the employees in the city.
Thanks, David.
And I'd like to have everybody work better to the city and the county, work together better for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you as well.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right.
You, too. Stay warm. Looks like you will in that coat.
I will.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. First item... Oh, consent. We have one item on the consent calendar.
I know. I heard last week was torture for Commissioner Willis. I take some pleasure in that. I move to approve the Consent Agenda under Human Resources, approve the Contract for Services with Cascade Centers Inc., DBA Canopy Wellbeing, in the not-to-exceed amount of $130,000 to provide Employee Assistance Program Services to Marion County, employees effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. First item under... Actually, Commissioner, we're gonna remove number two. So if I get a motion to remove number two, we need to adjust the amount based on some things that have happened, and we'll deal with that in a future board session, either next week or as soon as we can.
All right. I move to amend the agenda for item two under Action to just postpone the agenda item for a week or so.
Yeah. Well, just to remove it from today's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, great. And I'll second that motion. Yeah, we'll deal with it whenever we get to deal with it. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item is removed from the agenda. Next item is under Board of Commissioners. Consider Approval of a Beneficiary Agreement with Hope Pregnancy Clinic to utilize American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $749,000 through December 31st, 2026 to assist in construction of a pregnancy clinic that will provide medical services to disadvantaged women with low to moderate income within Marion County. Chris?
Thank you, Commissioners. What you said, no. My name is Chris Epley. I am the Deputy County Administrative Officer up in the Board's Office, and I'm pleased to present to you, for your consideration, a grant contract BO-6381-24, which, as you mentioned, is between Marion County and Hope Pregnancy Clinic. It is for the construction of a pregnancy clinic in addition to staff offices and counseling offices to provide services to historically disadvantaged, low-to-moderate-income individuals and families in Marion County. This particular center is anticipated to be located in a designated census tract identified by HUD as meeting the low-to-moderate-income requirements. Total project, they are anticipating to be $4,383,920. Our portion of it that we are agreeing to provide a beneficiary grant agreement for is $749,000. Their anticipated occupancy of the project is in December of 2025, so a very short construction period according to their initial estimates. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chris.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that two years ago, we also provided some funding to Hope to help them increase capacity in their original clinic, I feel like. And we also funded some opportunities for them to collaborate with the Health Department and Catholic Community Services to provide what I consider more of a wraparound stabilization system of care for women navigating their pregnancy and then early childhood. It's fascinating to me, in fact, kind of heartening to me that they're now doubling... They have a need to double this facility. This only improves the health of our community. And I appreciate Commissioner Willis, you bringing this to us and you going into the weeds on the details for me. I think the facts matter. The data matters. I know that there are folks in our community that struggle with some of the investments that we make, but I believe that there should be a service system on every corner of the pillar of needs that exist, and this is one that has a large gap in it. And I was most interested in, currently their facility is over in North Salem, in a low-income community that's predominantly white. I was looking at the kind of the layout map of Salem and how it is designed, but their largest service providing population is Hispanic, which means they're doing a great job of outreach and breaking down those cultural barriers to incentivize women to want to get appropriate care, to have healthy babies and healthy pregnancies and healthy childhoods, which create healthy communities. So I really hope that they can close their gap in funding. I know this will help them get to the finish line faster, but I just want to say thank you to you for bringing it forward and advocating for it. I know I gave you a little bit of a hard time, and I appreciated that you rode the wave.
Well, thank you for supporting this. Obviously, I feel passionate about it. I think one of the things that I like, I appreciate what you said, which is I think is a cultural thing here in Marion County, we support things that work. And so I do think you're right that if there's not data to support it, then we won't support it. It doesn't matter if they have a cool logo or if we like them personally. It's sort of a, does it work? Does it help people? And if it does, we want to have resources to support that. And if it doesn't, then those resources need to go somewhere else where they will help people. And I think one of the things that they also do that I know you're passionate about, I am as well, is they do a good job coordinating with Salem Health and Salem Hospital specifically for women who are struggling with substance abuse. Because we know that that impacts the babies, right? And you've told those stories that are so heartbreaking of the babies who have to be held 24/7 because they're dealing with withdrawals from the drugs. And so I do think that an organization like this that works so well with the healthcare system helps so many women who have different challenges in their lives. I think it's just a valuable thing for our community, and I'm proud that we're supporting it.
And I... One of the thoughts that I think is super important, because we're all fiscal conservatives, this really expands the access in the service system that we provide. It's a compliment to the work that we provide in Health and Human Services, and their ability to take the dollar further is easier because they don't have so many restrictions and costs that are tied to them as a non-government entity. They can essentially serve more folks with more unique services. And since you brought it up, we have a public health campaign coming out. So women who are pregnant should not be consuming kratom. You can get it in the supermarket, you can get it anywhere. And if you're a pregnant woman consuming it, the effects on your child is like taking meth. And it's a huge problem in Salem, and Salem Health is really experiencing some challenges with that. It's unacceptable that we don't have an education system out there to protect women from the harms of the world of things they consume that they think is just basic caffeine. It's not. So yes, Salem Health has a crisis when it comes to children, and this is just one more way we can help them, but I look forward to that campaign coming out in the first of the year and really being a champion of education. So thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks for your work on that.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
Is it my turn? I came in late, so I assume I...
We skipped the first one essentially, but...
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the beneficiary agreement with Hope Pregnancy Clinic to utilize American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding in the amount of $749,000 through December 31st, 2026 to assist with the construction of a pregnancy clinic that will provide medical services to disadvantaged women with low to moderate income within Marion County.
I second the motion.
You know, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Community Services is up next. Kelly, good morning. Consider Approval of an Emergent Economic Opportunity Program Agreement with Salem Baseball Club LLC in the amount of $300,000.
I'm super glad you have a PowerPoint. I'm a little disappointed that there's not some giant stuffy Marion Berry in this room right now. Come on, Luke.
Hats, hats. We need hats.
I know, I did talk about that. I saw it.
Where can we buy some hats?
Merch. I've seen it. What's happening in Salem? Where's these hats all the time?
I'm happy to buy the hat. I just need to know where to get it.
On the website. All right. I already looked at the website. You can get it.
Did you?
Yeah, and get your $50 deposit in for tickets. Okay. Kelly, tell us about what we're doing here today.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Kelly.
I'm Kelly Weiss. I'm the Economic Development Program Manager here at Marion County, and like you are all excited for, we're going to be talking about Salem Baseball and Softball Turf Project. So as a background for people who are like, what on earth are we all talking about? What we're looking at is a potential to support improvements for Willamette University's softball and baseball fields. So that way, they are able to add synthetic turf, fields, and lights to both those facilities. And the goal of this is not only to have some great Marion Berry merch, but also to improve these stadiums so that they can provide additional resources for Salem Kaiser School District, so that we can have high school sports at these facilities, including tournaments, which is, of course, a wonderful economic development opportunity. So according to the grant application, the estimated total project cost is 8.08 million, and so far, the organization has raised 6.6 million. So the proposed grant agreement that's before you today is to consider approving an allocation of one-time dollars of $300,000 from our Economic Development Program's lottery funding to be able to support this new investment in these facilities. The term is anticipated to be one year, but we have the opportunity for extension up to two years should something occur that we need to have that extension. And then we have a couple of proposed funding requirements. These are sort of standard in our Economic Development Program reporting, having a presentation to the Board of Commissioners sometime during the development, and then for marketing, include Marion County Economic Development in marketing for the project's funding. So with that, very quick intro, open to any discussion or questions. We also have Luke Emanuel here. He's available for any questions. He's the owner and team president of the Salem Baseball Club.
Yeah, I feel like he has to come up and talk.
Mr. Chair. Can you come on here, Luke? I led you astray. I'm like, you probably won't have to talk.
You knew it was gonna happen, right? You're gonna drop out the audience.
Yeah, just make sure you have that microphone pulled up, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us about what you're doing.
Absolutely. My name is Luke Emanuel. I'm the owner of Salem Baseball Club, and this project, and many of you I've chatted with, the foundation was we were trying to find synthetic turf for the high schools. And after many different efforts and discussions with the school district, we learned that they just simply can't do it at any of their high schools. And a lot of it is tile nine, but mainly it's cost. And so we really looked around at what other people have done to be able to install synthetic turf to make their fields more available to their students. And one of the best examples was in Springfield, Oregon, where they turfed a middle school baseball field and an elementary school softball field, and made it available to all of the kids in their school district and all the high school teams and youth teams. And so the way that they did it is they created a summer baseball team to utilize those fields when they don't have a lot of use in the summer, and that's the funding mechanism for the project and future replacement. And so I had the bright idea that I could do the same, and it kind of became a great collaboration with the school district and Willamette University, who also would love to have synthetic turf for their programs, for us to be able to, as a kind of three-headed approach, to get these two fields, which we believe are great because they're essentially located and easily accessible from all the different high schools in our area. And what I am probably most proud of is, in all of this, we have been able to get Willamette to contractually agree to make these fields available every day of the week to the Salem Kaiser School District.
That's great.
And so it'll be something wonderful that the school district's district-wide athletic director will be the one doing the scheduling, not Willamette, so they will have set times every day that they get to use the fields. And so the other additional users, we have the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and Special Olympics. And I like the Special Olympics one the best because they currently use a softball field at Busch Park, but because of conditions of the field and the weather, they can only invite so many of their participants. With that turf field, and particularly the softball field for Willamette, they'll be able to invite a wider spectrum of abilities and athletes to play in their league in the summer. So for me, kind of what my approach has always been in a lot of the areas that I've worked in my life is, how do we maximize the potential of something? And we already have these fields, right? They exist privately owned by Willamette, but how do we make them available to the community? It's not like Willamette uses them all day, every day, and this project does that. And it gets... It's a good start for our community to start getting fields that kids can use on a year-round basis. So that's really the foundation for why I'm here.
You want to know some fun facts about Luke?
Absolutely.
Careful.
I know. His sister, growing up, was my best friend. I've known him for a really long time. He's an East Salem kid like me. I won't go into any of the details, but he's also a fabulous athlete, and unfortunately a duck, but, you know, smart guy.
Well, I have known Luke significantly less the time than you have, like maybe a few months. But I do want to compliment you, Luke, on seeing this, envisioning this. I think it's one of the hardest things to do in our job, in your job, in anybody's job, is to see things that could be but aren't yet, and then to explain it to other folks so they can see it, too, and kind of bring people together to accomplish something. That's a really hard thing to do. It takes a lot of persistence.
He is persistent in nothing else.
And I, yeah, I've seen you, in this process, really be persistent, really be passionate about this project, really be passionate about youth sports. And I know, you know, just like anybody in our position, we had to do our due diligence. We had to say, hey, you got to check these boxes for this to work. And instead of you throwing up your hands and being like, ah, a bunch of jerks, they don't believe in me, you said, okay, let's go check those boxes. Let's go make this happen. And I know the City of Salem did the same thing, and Willamette did the same thing, and it does take that level of persistence, that level of commitment, that level of passion to make things come into the world that aren't there yet. And so even though I haven't known you that long, I've seen you operate in this space, on this project, and I have to say I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Three years in the making, so...
Yeah, so thank you for not giving up and for getting this done.
I do have a question, because as a former Booster member and somebody who's raised a significant amount of funds for youth and sports in Salem Kaiser Schools, I know firsthand that they have a significant issue with transportation. And Willamette University Fields are only close to one high school and one middle school. So do you have a strategy with the school district to make it equitably accessible with the transportation challenges that exist to all those high schools? And if not, you should convene something, and I'd be happy to come. But I don't want transportation to be the barrier to, especially the more distant schools that have funding challenges on a greater scale than some.
Yeah, and that's a great question, and it has come up, right? And so the quick response is, in talking with the school district, is, well, currently, in order for them to play their games, typically in the spring when it's wet, they're busing to McMinnville or Wilsonville. So this is probably some significant savings in not having to do that. I mean, it's almost every year, you can look at the schedule and see that Sprague played South at Linfield, which makes no sense, but that's because they need to get on turf. And so this is an opportunity to keep more people close to home. The example that I always like to use when I talk about it is, every spring, West Salem, Sprague, and South travel to Arizona to play in spring break tournaments, right? And so they're able to play nine or 10 games in eight days because they can afford to do so. We talk about McKay. You look at their schedule, for many years, or not many, for a few years, they couldn't even field a team. Within the last two years, they can field a team, but they can't afford to travel. So while all these other schools are getting a chance to play, McKay can play up to maybe one game if the weather is nice before the season actually begins. And so while I don't foresee those schools stopping from going to Arizona, what this does is it allows McKay and North the opportunity to host a spring break tournament right here in Salem without having to travel. So little examples like that, that there are some cost savings and more opportunity. But I do think maybe we should chat with the school district to see what other opportunities and cost savings there could be on transportation, because not everybody can drive.
It's been a huge barrier for a long time in Salem Kaiser, transportation for all sports, you know? And they get in their own way, that school district, on a lot of things, but the cost of transportation isn't something they can control.
Yeah.
And it has been very frustrating to me as a mom who's raised money through a Booster to get buses paid for, that it seems like it should just be a natural part of the flow to keep kids engaged. So I'm excited that this is coming to our local community, really, and I didn't know we could already buy tickets to reserve seats, so we'll have to get on that.
That's on us for marketing, right?
You can't buy the tickets, but you can buy a reservation.
Let's trust Commissioner Cameron to be in the front of the line.
Yeah, well, see you there.
Well, I know that we do have merchandise at GA At Home. That's our first local store that has our apparel.
I know, right where that is. I drive by it every day to go home. Green Acres, which is the landscape place off Gaffin Road in 22, for those that don't know, has a great little boutique out there with all kinds of cool swag. Yeah, okay.
And then Hataware, here locally downtown, will also have it soon, so for the hats, anyway.
Great. They're very cute.
Thank you.
I joined in on the selection of the Facebook, like, which logo do you like? And the giant fat Marion Berry really appealed to me with the eyes.
I loved it, yeah. I loved it.
I think it's super cute.
Pleasantly surprised and thrilled. Every once in a while, logos just nail it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, I'm sure Kevin's like, let's move along.
No, I'm actually looking to see where...
Trying to get your tickets.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, you go to the website and you can still get your tickets there, right there.
You know something else?
Buy tickets.
Luke's dad serves on our Parks Commission. You know, Mr. Emanuel?
Yeah, that's fabulous. A family of community service.
His sister's a great teacher in St. Louis.
When's the Marion Berry season start?
May 30th.
Oh, that's soon.
May 30th.
So it's a little bit longer than what the... Or is it the same type of schedule that the old...
Very similar to what single-A short season used to be when the volcanoes were here. So we'll go May 30th, and then, fingers crossed, we may get to the championship and it'll end August 15th.
Okay, good. Perfect time. Well, let's give him his $300,000, subject to travel Salem's 300, right? You got that all lined up?
We do. I was telling Kelly, I presented at City Council on Monday to help, as just a recipient of STPA funds. It was their time to renew STPA funds for another five years, and I was one of their presenters in advocating for the renewal of STPA. So we're in a great place with them. I think I told Kelly, they were thinking, they were waiting on you, but...
They were waiting on us.
Right. So it's just...
Everybody's waiting on everybody.
So that's...
We're not going to approve it today. We're just going to wait.
Like I said, he's a very persistent person, trying to navigate all this stuff.
He's going to stalemate everybody. Yeah, who wants to vote first?
That's what she said. Go first, be a hero. With that, I move to approve the Emergent Economic Opportunity Program Agreement with Salem Baseball Club, any amount of $300,000 to support synthetic turf and lighting improvements at Willamette University's baseball and softball stadiums with an ending term date of one year from execution.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, Luke, for your work.
Congratulations.
Kelly, thank you for getting this all done. All right. We're going to go on to, still under Community Services with Steve. Consider Approval of a Grant Agreement with Soaring Heights Recovery Homes to utilize health opioid grant funding in the amount of $450,000. Support Acquisition of Property, New Sobering Living Home Facility for Individuals Recovering from Substance Abuse Disorder through June 30th, 2027. Steve, welcome.
Thank you. Steve, did you with Marion County Community Services? This morning, we're bringing to you a request to approve an agreement with Soaring Heights Recovery Homes. The purpose of this grant is to purchase another home to expand their services to provide transitional housing for individuals who are recovering from substance abuse and transitioning into stability and to the community. This grant request came to us through our application process last fall through the CDVG and home application cycle for the 24... or the 25, 26... or 24, 25 cycle. And we brought these applications to the Commissioners on February 20th in a work session to review the applications. In the discussion about how we would be able to fund all of the projects, since this was the first year, we had more asked than we had money, your thoughtfulness and creativity brought to the table the opportunity to potentially use the opioid funding for this program because of the nature of what they do. We were sent to get some legal opinion to make sure that we could use that for this project, and when we came back in July to talk about the finalization of funding, once we received our final numbers from HUD, it was also determined that we could use this opioid funding for this project. And in that finalization of funding, it was determined that we would fund this project with that. In the final steps in August, when we brought the Annual Action Plan, this was also part of that discussion, and so we are now at that final stage of requesting the approval of the grant agreement. We do have Eric Razor here today with Soaring Heights, should you have any questions? And I do know that he has a property identified and has an offer in that has been accepted, and so they're ready to move forward with this, so...
I wouldn't hate it if he came and told us about the property.
Hello, I'm Eric, Eric Razor, Executive Director of Soaring Heights Recovery Homes. First off, I want to thank you guys once again for supporting us and allowing us to expand our mission here in Marion County. The property we've located is in Kaiser. It's about 2,200 square feet, five-bedroom. It's move-in-ready, and because of the location where we found this property, we're going to make this a women's house. So we'll open it up for women and children. I have a minor work that needs to be done, not much, so we should be able to get it opened up really quickly.
That's great.
Yeah.
I really just want to say, I know, Chris, you don't work for Kaiser anymore, you work with us, but I really appreciate the foundation that you created there for opportunities like this. You were there for a long time, and your leadership created policy perspectives and access for community stabilization that you didn't know was on the horizon, but has really created a perfect environment of a community that's welcoming. I believe that this property had initial some concerns from neighbors, but you were able to put those to rest?
We moved away from that property.
Oh, good. Even better.
Yeah, we found a different one.
Okay.
That was a little... And you know, it was really amazing because Victoria went over there like the day after we looked at the property and talked to some of the neighbors, and every one of them was really welcoming and supportive of us coming into the neighborhood. We didn't have any negative feedback for any of them, so it was just...
Well, I'm excited.
Yeah, just a couple blocks away from the other one.
We could really get some other cities to adopt the not language that Kaiser has to expand this. I think it would be really beneficial to this type of program.
Yeah, they've been so supportive over there in Kaiser.
Yeah. Thanks, Kaiser.
Yep.
And can we just say, like, what a good hire. I mean, man, that's Kaiser's loss that we got, Chris. Boy, was that a win for Marion County. Boy, was that a win for Marion County.
Yes, sir. We can say it. I agree. Well done. Eric, thanks for the work that you do.
Yeah.
I really look forward to seeing this house. I've been in all the, in the others, and I also want to let you know that I did get your email. I asked Eric to go out on a limb recently and do a cost analysis on what it would look like to open a home that could accommodate pets. We have a significant amount of, and I think I said this is state of the county, but if you go into any of our camps, specifically Wallace Park, you'll see a lot of animals. And I have a friend who's lived over there for a couple of years who just can't find her way out because she can't leave without her dogs. And I feel like we can really fully knock down that barrier if we can accommodate their only friends, their only true friends, some of these people in these camps, is their dogs and some cats.
Some cats, yes.
And I was shocked at the price tag, but overall, I understand it, and I look forward to working through that with you and other community partners to see if we can bring something online, because I think it will be the next real true solution to helping people find housing.
Yeah, and sometime in the future, maybe we'll sit down and talk more about that budget, because there's probably a lot of wiggle room there.
Sure, yeah, well, I'm not, trust me, in the weeds on construction, not my thing. And I just know that we have that need, so we'll, I think that we should just, as a community, look at how we can find flexible opportunities to really accommodate people's lives and happiness and security, and that means their pets.
Yes.
So I just want to say thank you on the record for your interest, because a lot of organizations shy away from the risk and liability that comes with that, and it's the same for you, but I think it takes courage to be interested in it, to take the risk.
Yeah, we are interested, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Chair, good?
I'm good, yeah. Appreciate it. Is it my motion? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the grant agreement with Soaring Heights Recovery Homes to utilize health opioid grant program funding in the amount of $450,000 to support the acquisition of property for a new sober living home facility for individuals recovering from substance abuse disorder through June 30th, 2027.
I second the motion.
You know, motion and a second. Any further discussion? The only comment I'd make is, I know I did a ride along with our female parole probation population team with Kelly and Connie, and we went into the facilities to actually meet with some of the clients.
Into Soaring Heights homes, yeah.
Yeah, so to actually see the work that's being done and some of the progress with the ladies that were there. So it was a good experience for me to see it hands-on, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Eric, for what you do. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, thanks, Steve. Next item, consider approval incoming funds grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice in the amount of $550,000 for the Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response Program through September 30th, 2027. Oh, Mr. Ryan, so good to see you this morning.
Good to see you. Yeah, I thought I'd be here for a proclamation to recognize Oregon Ducks as the Big Ten.
Oh, no way.
I couldn't get it worked together. I didn't want to change it by starting early, so we're just going to have to talk about the grant.
I just love how Ryan just rolls in here and just punches you right in the face.
I think it's amazing that you're raving up to do that, sir.
That is so solid.
But don't just give me strength.
Well, if that's all it takes, then.
Ryan, all I have is a metaphor today, but if I had my Beaver shirt on, and this is what I've been doing lately, underneath is my green O.
Wow, wow.
I mean, look at my tie.
That's very big of you.
Right?
I'm very impressed.
We're making real progress.
You know.
He's just being a real Oregonian, one of the not kindest humans on the earth from this state.
You know, I was in the restaurant business, had restaurants all over the state, from Eugene all the way to Portland, and you know, when I was in the legislature, I used to always think, yeah, I represent my district, but I represent the whole state.
There you go.
As Marion County Commissioner, we do things to represent our constituents, but we represent a lot bigger constituency than just here. And so I've come around to realizing that, yeah, I'm a Beaver, my girls are Beavers, but I'm rooting for the Ducks all the way this year, okay?
That's the sort of thing that I would say.
And they had a great game last weekend.
And Arizona State is in, right? I mean, the Pac-12, the Pac-12 was always kind of.
We live on.
Right?
Pac-12 was on.
And here's the most important thing that happened this year. The Oregon State Beavers, for the first time, won the Pac-12 championship.
Won the Pac-12.
They did.
But we're not going to the Rose Bowl.
Yeah, my son was there, playing in the March of the Beavers, he loved it, he had a great time.
I just like, like, whenever I talk to anybody, I'm just like, you can't actually want an East Coast team to beat an Oregon team, ever.
Absolutely not.
Like, come on, so of course we're behind the Ducks.
And it wasn't a small team either. I mean, it's a pretty big team.
The red lights on, whoever's watching.
They're like, get to this item.
We had too much fun.
So I am here seeking approval of a direct federal grant award from the Department of Justice for $550,000, and this is for a three-year grant contract. So this was a national competitive grant application process that was looking for projects that fostered law enforcement and behavioral health collaboration. So the timing of this was somewhat ideal for us, because for the public who may not be aware, or whoever, you know, we have historically had four mobile crisis response teams in Marion County. That was one QMH, Qualified Mental Health Professional that was paired with a sheriff's deputy, so we had one with our Marion County Sheriff's Office, we had two with the City of Salem PD, and then we had one with Woodburn Police Department. During this past year, we ran into a situation where with some federal changes around the funding source that Oregon Health Authority was utilizing, we were no longer able to have a joint response, a co-responder model where we had a law enforcement officer and a qualified mental health professional in the vehicle responding to citizen requests or emotionally disturbed persons that are out there in our community. We have since replaced those with community response teams, so we do have a path to replace that, but this law enforcement collaboration specifically was something we didn't have funding for, and so we sought this grant opportunity to try to restore one of those, and we were happy to announce that we did receive approval of this grant, and we've been working with our Sheriff's Office to restore a Marion County response team that will be, now unfortunately, it's only one team, it's not, we can't restore all four of them, but we feel like this is a great opportunity for us to kind of have both those models side by side, we can capture data on both, and we can see where maybe there's some gaps that one model doesn't support that this model can pick up, and then we can look for future funding opportunities to continue to either restore the funding through like the state legislator, state legislature, and Oregon Health Authority, or if we have to continue to go with like national federal grants, we'll have some foundation that we have some success here in Marion County that we'll be able to continue to operate. So we're really excited about this opportunity. We expect to get started, we're in the process of hiring and recruiting and hiring for our mental health professional. I know the Sheriff's Office has, I believe, identified a sheriff deputy, or they're at least close to formalizing that, so we're anticipating that this team could be on the streets as early as, early February probably, as we kind of get through the holidays, get people up and running and trained, and so this, and then we'll start communicating with our other law enforcement partners and dispatch about the exact schedule, because it's only, it's one shift, so it'll probably be four days a week, 10-hour shifts that they'll be, that this team will be covering, so we'll make sure that people are aware of when to call this team out. And so this is, again, we want to track the data and the outcomes related to this specific grant, and then we'll be reporting this, obviously, as part of our federal grant requirements, but then we also want to capture that and be able to use that locally to see if we can justify, you know, ongoing funding, because we do, we do feel like this is an unmet need in our community currently. Our community response teams, they can, they do a great job and they can respond, but there are a subset of those calls and those needs where you really need law enforcement to work alongside you. You cannot expect behavioral health professionals to go into an unknown environment dealing with somebody that they have no relationship with, where it might be potentially unsafe. And so this team can kind of deal with those calls, and I know that, you know, when our community talks about what they want from law enforcement, what they want from the healthcare system, they want people that are responding to those calls, where they feel unsafe, where they feel uneasy, where they feel that they're threatened, but no formal crime has been committed, so it becomes kind of this gray area where there needs to be a health response, but there also needs to be that law enforcement component with them, and that's the gap that we've lost since these four mobile crisis teams have gone away, and we're hoping that this grant will help, you know, restore at least a portion of that. So we're really excited, and we're anxious to get started, and we think that this is a great opportunity for Marion County, again, to, you know, this is a highly competitive process. We looked last year, I think only about 20% of the grant applications were successful. It was a really robust grant application. I know Retz in the audience, he was a big part of that, Katrina, like, they had to gather all the data and put together pages and pages of charts and graphs and narrative to kind of justify this work, and we're really excited about getting the approval and moving ahead, so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Ryan. I don't have any questions, but I do want to see that grant application packet, because I want to see all the data that's in it. And yesterday, during a meeting that the board had, Jan so insightfully provided us with some key performance measures for all of our departments, and one of them, of course, was the Health Department, and you guys have many, and one of those graphs was on mobile crisis, mobile crisis? Or MCRT, I think mobile crisis.
Well, no, it was. Mobile Crisis Response Team is MCRT.
It was the one with the law enforcement end.
Yeah, and the, and Colm said this, and I echo him, having that, I wish I would have had that, that exact visual aid 10 months ago. It is so telling, the number of calls that have escalated for that type of call in the last two years. I mean, it went like this, right up. I mean, it just went straight through the roof, and it like quadrupled in a year. You know, obviously, at one point, that team didn't exist, and then it came online, and you can see that trajectory as it kind of, as it first was designed, and then it became well-known within the system, and then obviously, it was the primary calling agent for folks in crisis. We need more visual aids, because what we're dealing with in the decision-making space at the state and the federal level is a complete unawareness to the reality that we face in our service system, and being able to show, the overutilization of just those four teams in that period of time would have been really telling. And I think the community needs to see it, because when people call 911, it's difficult for a dispatcher to know exactly what's going on, and being able to dispatch a, kind of a partnership team really serves a lot of needs and provides a lot of safety. And I'm disappointed that we weren't able to fund all four teams, but I'm thrilled that we're going to at least have one.
Well, even us getting this one, I think, is the result of us talking to Senator Wyden and really advocating for this, you know, because that law changed, that made it hard for us to fund these teams.
Yeah.
And I remember going back to DC, being in his office, explaining the need for this, and I'm convinced that's part of the reason why we got this grant was because.
Yeah, he's a huge champion for this.
Because he understood that this model, it's important this model continues, that this continues in our community.
Yeah, I know it was never his intention that this, that the changes at the federal level were going to disband what was working and existing. I know it was sort of an unintended consequence.
I remember being in the room in DC when he said, I remember you were sitting there. I don't think you were there.
I was there.
Were you there, all three of us in there?
Yeah, he leaned forward.
And he goes, no, that's not right. I remember.
This has to happen. He called, he calls it the, what did he call it? What's that Eugene program, the Kahoots program? He's like, I know it's not that, but that's what I'm going to call it. Okay, but you mean cops, right? He was like, yes. Okay, well, as long as you know Kahoots doesn't do police down there.
Yes, he was trying to advocate nationally for funding to expand this, so again, it was, it was just an unintended consequence of like how, you know, the details of the log gets written and then interpreted by state agencies and deployed down. So, yeah, it was, he's doing his best to champion these services.
And I think you're right, the more data that we have, the more support that folks can have to advocate for this model.
Yeah. Well, Rex and team, thanks for putting in the effort to get this, super big deal. I know that writing grants is one of the things that you do, and I appreciate the effort that you put in to get this one, being it's a priority of ours. Are you ready?
Ready.
All right, I move to approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice in the amount of $550,000 for the Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response Program through September 30th, 2027.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, the seven, eight, and nine are all very similar, they're actually connected to the same project, so we'll do, Ryan is here, and we'll do one presentation, and then we'll take three different motions.
Okay.
Sound good?
Fine by me.
Perfect. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Capital Projects Manager with Public Works, and I brought our project manager for the project as well today.
And I'm Shane Allison Jr. with Marion County Public Works, and I'm the project manager for this project.
All right, I will let Shane describe the project in general before we get into the resolutions we're looking at.
So Marion County received federal funds to improve Center Street in Salem from Lancaster Drive to just a little bit east of 45th Place, and with that, we're going to improve Center Street by widening it on the north side of the road only, so we can install a center turn lane, bike lanes, and sidewalks, as well as some other various stormwater improvements and enhanced pedestrian crossings, but that's kind of the basis of the project.
All right, we have already come with resolutions in the past for this project, but during our final review of the appraisals, there were a few items in our easements that we noticed and we wanted to update, primarily for the benefit of the property owners. Some of these were, let me jump back to my first, we had included to the completion of the project, because we don't want to leave it open-ended, we are changing that to for four years as the temporary easement that allows us to get on, not construct permanent improvements, but if the contractor needs to get in and grade or be able to move behind where they're doing excavation, we need to pay for that right. So we want to delimit that to four years and be able to pay the property owner for those four years.
Okay.
We also had included in one of these easements for storm drains, an open drainage channel in the easement language. What that would allow us to do is construct an open drainage channel across their access. That was not the intent, that was stormwater language that's fairly standard, and so when they were looking at it, we don't want that to even be a possibility, so we're removing that from the easement, so that we are not able to construct an open drainage channel across their easement.
Oh, good. I was like, what are we doing? No, that's a terrible idea. Okay.
We weren't going to do it, it was never part of the plan, it was just standard language for storm improvements that was in the easement that we hadn't caught and removed.
Okay, well, thanks for not doing that, it's probably the best approach for kids who don't want to fall into that ditch as they walk along Center Street.
Along with, exactly, along with that, we have the original, it said, we shall restore the topsoil and landscaping to as good of condition as it was prior to any such work. We are going to include that, but also add, grant he shall not construct storm improvements that would permanently block or impede access to the grantor across said easement. Again, we want to maintain their access, the intent is to not harm property owners with these easements, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear in the easement language.
What does that mean exactly, for those of us that have no idea what you just said?
So their driveway will remain.
Okay.
That's really what it means. They will have access to their property, we aren't going to use this easement to cut them off from the rest of their property. It's a large commercial property, so we're going to keep them.
Is this the bowling alley?
It is.
Okay. People want to go bowling, I'm just saying, so we need to let them bowl.
They do, and that is actually, all the changes, they're fairly minor changes, but we did need to come back and update that resolution to include these.
Great.
Language changes.
I have one question. I don't want to get too far in the details, but there was a kind of a lingering challenge. Was, has that been resolved with the one tree?
It has not, that is one of these three easements. I believe that is the easement with the four-year language.
Yeah, all three of them have the four-year language, but yes, the one that's not the bowling alley, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're still working together, we have updated the appraisal, and we're continuing to work with the property owner.
Okay. I know that it's difficult, I really appreciate the effort that you're all putting into the relationship and conversation. You know, it's hard to live in a community that's expanding and be the one that's impacted. I could resonate with the challenges, but I appreciate that, I know you spent a lot I could resonate with the challenges, but I appreciate that, I know you spent a lot of time gently navigating and respectfully conversing to try to come to a, an agreement that really is a compromise for both the need of this community, which is vast, and also that property owner.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate, I, I do appreciate the time you're putting in and the effort to try to come to a.
Yeah.
Resolution. Yeah. It's important. All right.
Do I have to just make a rolling motion? Is that what you're after?
Well, we're gonna go one, two. We're gonna do a motion, approve it, motion, approve it, motion, approve it.
Can you just read them all then?
I will. We'll just do it one at a time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution to authorize acquisition eminent domain of cer- certain real properties for tax lot 072W30AB01300 as reference in exhibit A for the Center Street Lancaster Drive to 45th Place Northeast Improvement Project.
I second the motion.
No, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution to authorize acquisition eminent domain of certain real properties for tax lot 072W19DC03500 as reference in exhibit A for the Center Street Lancaster Drive to 45th Place Northeast Improvement Project.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution to authorize acquisition eminent domain of certain real properties for tax lot 072W30AA01400 as reference in exhibit A for the Center Street Lancaster Drive to 45th Place Northeast Improvement Project.
I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And for the record, I vote aye on eight because I couldn't get it out of my mouth as fast as you went through it. I don't know if it matters, but I just put it out there.
Okay, good. Thank you, gentlemen, for getting this done. Appreciate it.
When will we start seeing any type of groundwork, I guess?
So for the Marion County project, uh, because we're still working through right-of-way acquisition, we're getting to a point where we're not going to be able to construct in the summer of 2025.
Okay.
Uh, just because we don't have time to work through the federal process and be able to bid the project. That said, utilities are gonna get out there before us.
Okay.
Uh, utilities can start as early as this summer. Um, I know that the public may not see a difference between Northwest Natural being out there in the county. So, uh, you will see some work start. You'll see some, some people moving utilities, uh, getting ready for this project as early as this summer correction.
Actually, they're, I think Northwest Natural is getting very close to doing their work now.
Okay. Would you all do me a favor, just as a, in a hindsight lesson learned from the Hayesville project? You have social media. Would you just make a schedule of who's gonna be where and when? Uh, it doesn't have to be super comprehensive, but if you just want to put something out like, you know, in the next few weeks, Northwest Natural is gonna be on Center Street in this space and then what's coming next? I know that that Hayesville project was very long and there was a lot of heartburn about it. It's an amazing space, right? And we knew that it was gonna take a long time. But the neighbors in that community were really impacted because they didn't really understand the phases. It wasn't just the county, right? PGE was out there forever. And, uh, we kept getting a lot of complaints and I'm happy to take those complaints and route them properly. But I think just communicating as easily as we can, I, I don't know if Yancy can do this, if she's, I don't know if it's still Yancy, but, uh, it's not, okay.
It is now Erin.
Great. I look, I look forward to meeting Erin. Uh, and just having them put out just some notices. You, they recently did this for another project in Public Works that I saw great feedback from our community on, just a, the heads up was really nice. In fact, I saw a, a post yesterday in Silverton on the opening of that bridge and like a hooray that's open, which is, you know, people are, are tracking our social media is my point. And I think just a little more effort and letting them know what's to come would be nice.
No, we, we will definitely work with Erin to get some posts out and, uh, be proactive even though our construction's not going to start until probably 2026.
That would be really, really nice. Thank you. And if we, if John here in the office, in the board's office can help, please call him and put him to work.
Totally.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, before we, uh, move on, um, I'd ask that we would suspend the rules and allow Commissioner Willis to, uh, vote on the consent agenda.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
I vote aye.
All right. Commissioner Willis votes aye on the consent agenda. All right. Anything else for the record?
Uh, well, I guess I'll just put a plug in for Kaiser. Uh, this, there's several things happening right now. It's the holiday season. Uh, Shop with a Cop is on Saturday, which is run by a local nonprofit. Uh, several electives will be there. I'm gonna go. I'm super excited in the morning. Then right after that is the Kaiser Giving Basket Delivery. So if you want to help bring joy to folks, you can go with your vehicle and get a food box and designated gifts for a family that's been, uh, selected by, and there's many families, uh, by school counselors in the Kaiser community to deliver to their home. And then Saturday evening is the Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade. Uh, it's sure to be a good time. It's not supposed to rain and you should get there early. There's many restaurants and vendors participating along River Road with pop-up stands for cocoa and hot dogs and different things to really bring the community together. I ran that parade for several years. It is a major volunteer community investment and it's so fun. And every entry in the parade, including the people walking, have to be lit up. So lots of creativity comes from all over the valley to participate in that parade. It starts at 7:00 PM on Saturday and the road closes at 6:00 PM, River Road does. So here's your PSA, if you live in Kaiser, find your alternate route before 6:00 PM on Saturday because it'd be a long way around. Are you gonna go with your grandsons, Kevin, to the parade?
No.
Nope. Fine.
Um, I guess I didn't do the public service announcement. I should have. Last, last week, we had, uh.
The Detroit Christmas.
Detroit Christmas tree lighting.
I saw that on Facebook.
Quite a few people there. It was pretty cool. The fourth annual.
That's great.
Since the fires.
We also did holiday gift baskets.
Our sheriff, our sheriff did the shop with the cop up there. They had Santa and Mrs. Santa and, and, um, the elf were all there in the, um, community center. And there was a line of kids, I went over there, Bicki and I went over in the afternoon. There was a line of kids that went out into our for, it was, it was really well-attended up there.
Yeah.
So that was great. I, I should have announced it last week.
I wasn't here last week because I was on, uh, a work trip. But you know, Friday night was the Salem Light Parade and I, of course, wasn't here.
Was that last week or the week before?
Was it the week before? I'm like looking at the newspaper guy. Do you even know? It was the first Friday.
The newspaper guy.
Anyway.
Hi, Bill.
Whatever Friday it was, I saw it on social media and such a great turnout. Derek Gilbert, who is kind of the brainchild behind that, um, has done a great job. And I just want to say thanks to Jan for letting our community, our business services team help bring some holiday cheer with some extra lighting to help the ambiance of the parade route that goes by here. Um, last year we couldn't quite figure it out in time and this year they did. And the community really, uh, reached out to me and said, "Thanks for the county to participate. We're a big staple here." And they saw our lights, so good job. I don't get down here at night, so maybe I'll have to drive down and see what they look like out front.
All right. We're getting close. We have board session next week, which would be, what, the 18th?
Yes, it's a long one.
That'll be our last one, uh, for the end of the year, so we'll probably have a long.
It's a long agenda. Yep.
Um, so.
Oh, I am. This is like a joke.
You missed it when I said, I kind of find pleasure in the torture this is bringing you.
Should I be late?
You should be late.
Yeah. Should I schedule, should I schedule being late? I mean, yeah, I'm always late.
Oh, she's not here? You're not here?
I am. If you schedule being late, it won't matter. Just to be clear. And it's fine.
We'll delay. We'll do something else first.
I'm secretly late, but for the record, I have never scheduled being late before.
I've always wanted to do voice-overs on commercials and I feel like the opportunity that I've had to do that is reading this consent agenda. And the weeks that it's super long, I feel like I'm producing a commercial.
All right. So we, uh, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we, we will adjourn.